You've insured both of them.
Well, I kept the liability out. But you know what? It's a liability. It was like half, half of insurance.
I've insured both of those more than I have my insurance. The debtors have hit me in not having insurance.
And that's why the car came here to do nothing. You really, you know. And then, then I think citizens cannot expect my health. They're not, I guess. They check them out. Then they turn up and they'll notice saying, we, we have the other country wants to destroy your house. By the way, it's only about forty-five.
Mine's, mine's almost covered. So I said, you?
That was a mistake. I got caught twice in a row. I mean, getting up to go out.
Did my insurance book it down for the whole vacation?
They said they were all busy. They were too busy Friday. So I didn't even call them.
She don't bite.
And when you might tell her, you go to the hospital.
She don't bite.
It gives you a website. It's either or. And if it's more than twenty percent, if it costs more than twenty percent, you have the option. I said, no.
We're going to get started here in just a couple of seconds. We can take our seats.
Oh, yeah. Mine's, mine's probably sixty-five, seventy.
All right. Now I call the city council regular meeting to order for September the 25th. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Lord, we just invite your presence into this meeting tonight, Father. Lord, we ask for your wisdom tonight. We ask for your guidance, Father. I ask that you protect everyone here, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number four. We have Jennifer Cotto Salisbury here from CFRPC. It's going to enlighten us. The Air Force Range Compatibility Use Plan.
All right. Okay, good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
For the record, thank you for the introduction. Jennifer Cotto Salisbury with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be on your agenda tonight. Of course, we work in partnership with the city on planning-related items and really an extension of your staff. And we also do a lot of coordination with our neighbor, the Avon Park Air Force Range, not too far down the road. And every ten years or so, we look at seeing how we can improve communications and coordination and also for areas close to the range within about a three-mile buffer.
Recording in progress.
Communication and coordination.
Okay.
And, oops. I think I hit the wrong. Whoops, it's probably, it's user error, I'm sure. There we go. Operator error. Okay. Here are some great photos from activities at the range. Buck McLaughlin, the Range Operations Officer and former commander, was going to be here tonight with me. He gives a very dynamic presentation, so I'll do my best to live up to that. He's actually coordinating the flyover of the Bucks game tonight, so. That being said, we have twenty military installations in Florida, and this is really a key economic component for Florida's economy. The military and the related businesses bring in about ninety-six point six billion each year. And we have, with related to jobs, about eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand jobs in the defense industry as well. So back in, whoops. I am rocking it here. There we go. Back in two thousand and four or so, the Florida Legislature signed a bill that really recognized our twenty installations and provided a compatibility statute that the local governments in close proximity to those installations, that we all talk and coordinate often. As part of that, for Avon Park Air Force Range, there are seven installations called out, and that includes the city of Avon Park, as well as Highlands County, the city of Sebring, Okeechobee and Osceola Counties, and Polk County and Frostproof right down the road. So as part of that, we also have adopted in the city's comprehensive plan just a policy in the future land use element for coordination, which has been there about ten years now. This is just a map, again, showing the range in the green. And again, those seven jurisdictions, which we say are in the military influence planning area. So you probably see jets and hear them. And also, the closer you get, you might experience vibrations or things like that from activities. So we are currently completing a compatible use plan. And really, this looks at the areas around the installation, how they may have changed over the past ten years, and how we're continuing to communicate and coordinate. Part of this coordination includes things that you might not want to see really close to the range because the flights drop in pretty low coming in as a really high cell tower. So there's a fifty-foot height limit within the three-mile buffer. This is just a brief mission statement of the installation. It is one of those key, unique world-class training installations in the country. And a little bit more detail, it is the largest primary training range east of the Mississippi. And I always have to read that to make sure I get that right. But it is the largest air-to-ground training installation east of the Mississippi. It's about a hundred and six acres, and it's also available for training of all of the branches of the armed forces.
Hundred and six thousand acres.
Yep, what'd I say? Hundred and six.
Hundred and six.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Again, on this map, the green is the installation. That, whoops. First circle is the three-mile buffer around the installation. And that's really where you'll see requirements for jurisdictions within that area in the comprehensive plans and land development codes to have additional measures. One is a fifty-foot height limitation. Two is, you probably don't want to see new landfills going in because there's a bird conflict potentially. And also lighting. For night training, lighting encroachment can be an issue if you had a large stadium. That can obscure visibility for pilots during training. So we have dark skies lighting requirements. So you would see that in unincorporated Highlands County in their land development code. In Avon Parks, we just have a notice that you're in proximity to the installation, and you may hear activity. And that's MIPA three, which is the yellow area where the city of Avon Park is located. That purple area is also an area where you would see height limitations and lighting. So as we've looked at the compatible use plan, we've also looked at the change in population in the past twelve years. These were numbers. Twenty-twenty-three numbers are just coming out. But several jurisdictions have experienced quite a bit of growth. And that includes Avon Park at almost eleven percent. So that continued dialogue on compatibility. Some of the things that you don't want to see really close to the range, and I had some photos that I didn't include, would be like a large multi-story, multi-family project because that's a public safety concern. Most of the land around the installation is agriculture, which allows low density, one unit per five acres, which is more compatible from a public safety perspective and the mission of the range as well. This is a map that shows those military influence planning areas. Again, the green in the middle is the installation. And then you can see, from a future land use perspective, a lot of that land remains agriculture or low density. This is a far-out view of Highlands County, which has all of the military influence planning areas, one, two, and three. And again, a zoom-in of the county. And again, MIPA three really has Avon Park, Sebring, and most of our urban development. And most of that is just so folks know, the range is out there. This is a zoom-in of Avon Park, and Jeff ran some numbers for me before I got here today. But the corporate limits of Avon Park are about three miles from military influence area planning area one. So we really don't, at this time, have a need to look at any height restrictions in the city's land development code or lighting, just being aware that they are a neighbor. And the city of Sebring is really the same. They're a little closer with their corporate limits, about one point two miles away. And some things that are working, one of the big goals of the compatible use plan and the former compatible study done in two thousand and ten, is just letting folks know the range is out there. In Polk County, the property appraiser has a disclosure. So if you're ever looking up a property, if you're close to the range, it lets you know. Hey, if you're looking at buying property here, you might experience sound blast noises, low-flying jets. So again, that communication. As we look at this update, this compatible use plan, we're also looking at opportunities for that continued coordination with property owners, local governments, ways to continue compatibility, sustain the military installations mission, but also, number one, is public safety. The compatible use plan, there was a flyer in your agenda packages, but we got a lot of questions. You know, what does this mean for my property? It doesn't change anything. It's just to let you know the installation is here. And for those local governments and property owners really close to the range, you know, just looking at ways to remain compatible and prevent encroachment. We have a policy committee, which has an elected official from each of the seven local governments. And Mayor Anderson serves on that. And we have a meeting about once a year and hearing from each of the jurisdictions. And of course, we have the advantage of working with you all on planning-related items, so knowing what's going on. So from that standpoint, next steps, we'll be publishing the compatible use plan on our website and hopefully linking to yours, just so everyone can see kind of current conditions, how much the areas have grown. And again, just continuing that communication and coordination. And I'm available for any questions. And Buck gives a way more exciting presentation, but that's, oh.
You did great.
The last thing I did have is, if you all would like a tour at the range, a city council tour, they are more than happy to provide that. It's always interesting, and we can arrange it when there's actual activity.
Can't do it.
Well, even if we notice.
Yeah, it's outside the city limits, and it's considered a meeting if they're together. And the Attorney General's office has taken a very.
Individually.
I won't say anal, but I will say that a very strict view with regard to that issue. Give me a call, and we can talk about it, and I'll tell you about it.
Okay, you did not see that slide. We'll leave it right here.
But we could do individual, right?
Yes, you can arrange individual all day long.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Any questions for her?
No, great job as usual.
Okay, thank you.
It's good to see you all.
All right. Item number five, we have minutes from September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Be looking for a motion. Make a motion to approve the minutes, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number six, we have the CFRPC Planning Advisory Services Agreement, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. Mark, anything you care to share about this? Not in our packet?
No, I think I put it in the packet. Jennifer's here. I would have put it on consent, Jen, if I knew she was here, if anybody had a question for her.
Any questions about this contract with CFRPC?
Yeah, I have a question for Mark. Mark, is this a year-to-year, a contract agreement?
Yes.
Yep. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion and we approve item number D six, Planning Advisory Service Agreement.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven, this will be a public hearing for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty.
It's a resolution of the city of Avon Park, Highlands County, Florida, adopting the final living of ad valorem taxes for Highlands County for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, providing an effective date.
Okay. Melody, anything you care to share about this?
I do not, just that I would like to state that the millage rate of four-point-three-six-eight-one is greater than the rollback rate of three-point-eight-four-three-two mills by thirteen-point-six-six percent.
Okay. All right, as I said, this will be a public hearing. So a public hearing for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the final millage rate can do so. Don't see any hands. Public hearing for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty is now closed. Does the council have any questions or comments?
Yep.
Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion and approve resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty, final, final millage rate.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight, this will be a public hearing for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one.
A resolution of the city of Avon Park, Highlands County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, providing an effective date.
Melody, same question?
Yes, so the only changes that we made, that I made after the September eleventh tentative hearing was the increase in the fire assessment revenue, the decrease in the health insurance, and the increase in the FAM agreement.
Yep. Okay, any questions on any of that? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one. Anyone wishing to speak can now do so. I don't see anyone jumping up and down, so. Public hearing for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one is now closed. I'll ask the council, do you have any further questions, comments?
I have a comment, please. First of all, let me say thank you to Melody for doing a great job, as usual, with the budget. I mean, you and your staff do a fantastic job that basically makes it easily for us to understand it and follow it, so I appreciate that. I also want to thank you for the last week's meeting, when we were trying to deal with this FAM increase that unfortunately Mark wasn't here, but you jumped right in because of the fact that the members of the city council said that they really were waiting to hear from our expert advisor, Lowell Clary, to see what his opinion would be on the increase. And Melody did a great job, went, tracked him down, making phone calls, and finally got a hold of Lowell. And actually, at the very end of the meeting, Lowell actually went online and zoomed in and basically said he was glad to be here. He said he disagreed with FAM's agreement where they wanted, where the increase was too large. But he said that the council wanted to, that he would come back and give us his opinion on direction, which way we should go. And actually, we made a motion, and everybody at the council that was here approved the idea that we wanted to get Lowell Clary's opinion before we decided on what we're going to do on the FAM's agreement. So with that being said, I think all of you probably seen at the very end of your packets, I think it's on page one-thirty, where Lowell Clary did express his opinion on what he thought would be a fair assumption to increase the FAM agreement. And part of this thing, and like I said, this was something that everybody on the council that was here agreed that we wanted to go with his opinion. And he says his calculation came out to fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars per month.
Why don't you just let that be its own agenda?
Because are we going to vote on this here first?
Yeah.
Well, then.
And it comes up on its own.
We can make an amendment.
Well, then, how are we going to be able to change the budget afterward?
You can make an amendment a thousand times a year if you want.
Okay, so we can change it after the end? Okay, my apologies then, let's move forward.
Okay. So we had the public hearing for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one. That was opened and closed. Is there, have we made a motion for?
Not yet, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one? Establishing the final budget?
So moved.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nine, this will be a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number zero-nine dash two thousand and twenty-three.
This is an ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida, providing for adoption of code changes to add a fats, oils, and grease fog program to wastewater code. Providing for amending city code section ninety-eight dash two sixty-eight regarding definitions, rules of construction, abbreviations to add fog-related definitions. Providing for amending section ninety-eight dash one forty-seven improper discharge or deposit of waste to add provisions relating to fog regulation. Providing for amending section ninety-eight dash two seventy restrictions on discharges to sewer system to add fog-related prohibitions to the wastewater code formerly adopted fog program. And adopt the fats, oils, and grease program manual containing more details, prohibitions, and information about fog regulation. Providing for amending section ninety-eight dash two seventy-one assessment on certain restrictions requiring pretreatment and equalization facilities to add references to other fog sections and require proper transport of fog. Providing for amending section ninety-eight dash two seventy-three interceptors required to add reference to the fog manual as to requirements for design and installation of the maintenance and cleaning of fog interceptors. Providing for amending section ninety-eight dash two seventy-six. Reporting requirements to add references to fog manual regarding sampling and clarify that the city may use contract labs for sampling and analysis. Providing for codification and repeal of conflicting codes, ordinances, and resolutions. Providing for severability, scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Jerry. Believe it or not, that was the short title.
There's a couple of typos in the short title. I'm a terrible secretary, and maybe you could glean those out for me, thanks. One is information, has missing an M, so on.
Okay. Does the council have any initial questions about this?
No, sir.
All right, this will, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, I had a question. So if I was reading right, this is all the new businesses. This has nothing to do with the existing businesses?
All business.
All of them?
It's going to be, initially, it's going to be new businesses, but eventually, it's going to be all businesses.
When you say eventually, like, that's going to take effect, like?
Yeah, it's, well, it's going to be, there's a lot for us to do to get this program going, but ultimately, everybody's going to have to be in compliance, just like we have to be in compliance with new laws and so on as well. But this, fats, oils, and grease interfere with the treatment process and the transmission of sewage to the treatment plant. And it really actually caused trouble even for their own systems, but, you know, some restaurants don't mind that, apparently.
Okay. All right, this will be a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number zero-nine dash two thousand and twenty-three. Anyone wishing to speak on that can now do so. Seeing no takers. Second reading for ordinance numbers zero-nine dash two thousand and twenty-three is closed. I'll ask again if the council has any questions. Seeing none, we'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion and approve ordinance number oh-nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number ten, we have the first reading of ordinance number ten dash two thousand and twenty-three.
It's an ordinance of the city of Avon Park, amending chapter fifty, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article Two, Fire Department, Division Two, Firefighter's Retirement System, and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Avon Park, amending section fifty dash fifty-six, benefits, amounts, and eligibility. Amending section fifty dash fifty-eight disability, providing for codification, providing for severability provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
All right. Do we have any questions about ordinance number ten dash twenty-three?
Yeah.
Seeing none. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item number D ten, which would be ordinance number ten dash two thousand and twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eleven, this will be the first reading for ordinance number twelve dash two thousand and twenty-three, implementing the state's mandate to prepare business impact estimate procedures.
I don't, oh, there it is. Okay, sorry. An ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida, amending section two, the city code, adding Article seven, section two, three dash three sixty-two, providing for implementing the state's statutory mandate to prepare business impact estimates prior to the adoption of proposed ordinances pursuant to the section one sixty-six point oh-four-one sub four. Florida statutes providing findings adopting business impact estimate procedures, requirements, and exemptions, adopting business impact estimate worksheet, and allowing amendment of such worksheet by the city manager. Providing for charging for costs of business impact assessment when appropriate. Providing for severability, conflicts, and effective date. So it's a matter of information, as I mentioned before, and at a previous meeting, when we went through all the statutory changes, we will now be required to provide a business impact estimate for ordinances that are passed. That is, the second reading after October first. And then, as such, there are some exemptions for things like the Central Florida Regional Planning Council type, your zoning planning and zoning ordinances and so on. But the conventional wisdom is that we're going to do it for everything, all ordinances. Even, I'm saying that this ordinance needs to even have a business impact since it's not going to be passed until the next meeting, which will be after October first. And the reason for that is that the, the impact of being wrong as to whether it actually fits the exemption, or all of it fits the exemption. Maybe some does and some doesn't, is just too great at this point. Maybe in a year or two, well, there'll be enough evaluation of these things, you know, or legislature will figure it out and make it clear that we can feel more comfortable with exempting some of the ordinances that they claim are exempted. So this is the first reading, and as I mentioned, there's a worksheet that was put together, both the ordinance and the worksheet. You know, it's not something I did full cloth. I got that, the forms from the Florida League of Cities, which has been furiously trying to put this all together for cities to, you know, try and get this going. I believe there's probably going to be a cottage industry developing for doing these for cities. A lot of it can be done by staff in-house when they're fairly simple. But there'll be some that are very complex, that will probably need, you know, some additional help. And perhaps, you know, somebody like that would be helpful. That's why I worked in there, the, providing for charging the costs associated with it. Some people suggested that the chambers of commerce might be interested in doing this, making a little additional money and providing these in good faith. I don't know whether they're confident to do that or not. I leave that to the city to make that decision. But we're putting this together so that we can amend our code to implement this lovely unfunded mandate by the Florida Legislature. Thank you.
Seems like a nightmarish situation.
Yeah.
Does it have any qualifications to be able to do that study?
Well, exactly.
Yeah, it's really done in good faith. Yeah, it's really done in good faith, and if you look at the ones the legislature does, I don't know how they put those together because it's really, well, I just will say that it just don't look real convincing to me, but nevertheless, you know, we got to do a good faith estimate, it doesn't, in fact, they're very clear about, the legislature was clear that those does not require certainty, in other words, it doesn't have to be exact, it's going to be very unlikely it's going to be a basis for a lawsuit if somebody says, well, you know, I wasn't on notice that this would be an impact, because it's just, it's very, very difficult to try and pinpoint how this is really going to impact, any particular ordinance is going to impact businesses.
Well, wouldn't it be true that if the city was to pass an ordinance that affected a business in a very negative way and it wound up, you know, shutting their business down or costing them a lot of money, that the city would already have some liability or at least a cause for a lawsuit anyway?
No, not necessarily. I mean, just because a business is shut down because of a code doesn't mean that it's unlawful. In order for it to be unlawful, it has to be arbitrary and capricious, or now they've changed capricious to unreasonable.
Yeah.
And so.
Do you see in that scenario this putting a new layer of, I guess, liability on the city?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
If part of this bill that they pass, they basically are inviting people to sue the city.
Great, wonderful.
So.
Mr. Burr?
Yes.
How many staff members would do this evaluation and how would they be chosen?
I don't know that. That would be purely a decision of the city manager as to who's going to do it and how they're going to do it. I provide the worksheet based on what the Florida League of Cities recommended be a good format for it, and it's pretty much a cookbook, but, you know, it doesn't tell you how many businesses are going to be impacted, it just helps you figure, you know, put it on, and then this has to be, that business impact assessment has to be put on the website, your city website.
What's the plan, Mark? It's obviously something that's going to be implemented ASAP here, so.
Yep.
Any ideas of how we would approach it?
I mean, it's going to be a trial and error thing, I think, to start with, we're going to do the best we can in good faith, and like Jerry said, if it gets to the point where we're going to have to hire somebody to go out here, but I think that every city, municipality is going to deal with the same thing we are.
All that spare time staff has already.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that.
Any questions, Jerry, or staff, or anybody?
No, that's why I refer to it as an unfunded mandate, this is not going to be, you know, free.
Okay, any questions at this point?
No.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two-three, please.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number twelve, this will be resolution number twenty-two-three dash twenty-two.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Avon Park, Florida, providing for adoption of grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation, providing effective date.
Melody, give us some good news.
So this is standard procedure when we receive a grant from Florida Department of Transportation, so we received three-hundred-and-sixty thousand six dollars to repave a portion of Anoka Avenue, it's about three-quarters of a mile of Anoka Avenue.
Okay. Any questions on that? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number thirteen, this will be FDOT disclaimer.
Yeah, so FDOT is trying to make some improvements to Lake Verona outfall area for stormwater, and there was, because of old deeds and lack of title records and things like that, which we've run into at the airport as well, we, they're having some issues with regard to trying to finalize the fact that they have easements to do these improvements, and part of it's a small triangle that's in your package there, and another piece across the street, across Main Street, and so on, not huge areas, and they're asking us to disclaim any rights to those particular parcels so that they can safely proceed forward, and in my recommendation, you go ahead and do so.
As many storm drains as we can give away to the state, the better. Anyone have any questions about this?
No.
Seeing none. So would it just be a motion to approve the FDOT disclaimer?
Right.
Okay. Did you have a question, Bernice?
And authorize mayor to sign it.
Okay.
Mayor, when you make the statement that the more we give to them, the better, that means they're going to be able to maintain them better than us and be able to afford it?
They're currently maintaining this particular one, they're just looking for clear titles so they can actually perform the work. The point of my statement was just that there's a liability there, if someone decides that they want to climb in this dagum drain and hurt themselves or something, the city doesn't need to own that sort of thing, if there's a DOT that's more than happy to take care of it for us. Or if something ever got spilled in that drain and it's an outflow and it's a big cleanup and et cetera, et cetera, just let it be their problem, not ours. They have far deeper pockets.
Agreed.
All right, is there a motion to approve the FDOT disclaimer with giving mayor the authority to sign this as well?
So move.
All right, we have so move, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number fourteen, this will be Florida Airport Management or FAM management fee increase request. Jim, you were saying?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, can I add one thing quick for?
Please.
Deputy Mayor, just so you know, Lowell is on Zoom.
Excellent.
Well, thanks for being here. Obviously, I had a few words earlier that I think we all remember, what I said, so I'm not going to go back on them, but I do want to thank the city manager, who I previously had talked to maybe almost a month ago, that he said he agreed that FAM deserves some type of an increase, so I appreciate his efforts in sharing that information with me, and that's, basically, that's cut to the chase, is that what I said at our last meeting, we all agreed and voted on listening to Lowell Clary and his advice and his expert opinion on which way we should go on increasing, and that Mr. Clary said that FAM's original offer of going to twenty-five thousand was way too much, but he, with our motion that we moved to have him move forward and look.
The motion was asked for him for his opinion.
Right.
To be clear.
Okay, he gave his opinion, basically, his opinion is a one-sentence agreement, my calculation comes out to fifteen thousand two hundred per month. This recognizes the effort but does not pay the items that are not necessary for running the airport under a management agreement. So with that being said, to me, in my opinion, it's plain and simple, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and make amendment to pay FAM the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred dollars per month.
Did you make a motion?
I just did.
You made a motion, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments?
Was there any clarification on whether or not we were going to be able to get it back through the AIPP?
I'll let Lowell speak to that.
Under the AIPP, you would have the ability, to the extent that you get lease payments or revenues that are over expenses in the future, you could reimburse yourself, yes. And that would be not only for future, but it would also be for past payments to FAM.
Okay. And I believe the only caveat there is the lease payments can be deferred through improvements made by FAM, is that correct?
Yes, it would have to be a capital improvement in the title of the city, so it would belong to the city after the lease is over.
Right. So any buildings or facilities or runway extension or, you know, things like that?
Right.
Okay. Did that answer your question? Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Clary, for your advice and opinion.
Mr. Clary, do you think it is in the city's best interest to up this amount?
I do, I think the effort being put forward is in improving the airport, and I think it will be a benefit to the city, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So will this be in effect for twelve months or until the grant comes through?
Lowell?
That's up to the city, it would be in effect until the management agreement changes or the city changes it. The AIPP lease would take the place of the management agreement, and then you could have a discussion at that point if you want to continue it or stop it.
Right, okay. Obviously, it's expected that this will happen in less than twelve months, but it was also expected to happen two years ago, so, you know.
Yes, it was.
So can we put a cap on it, can we say twelve months and then reassess that twelve months if for some reason the grant didn't come through?
Yeah, we can do whatever we wish.
You want to add that to the motion?
It'd have to be an amendment.
Okay.
An amendment, it'd be a new motion, but.
Thank you.
I would, just before we make any new motions, I'd like everybody to say what they want about it, so that way we're not having to go back and forth. Is anyone opposed to what Councilman McGuire just said?
No, not opposed to.
Okay, all right, do you want to make that motion?
Do we need to vote on his first?
We would make the amendment first and then the main motion.
Motion to amend.
Be a motion to amend.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend that we cap it at twelve months or until the AIPP grant comes through.
Okay, would the twelve months be a cap, whichever one is sooner?
Whichever one is sooner.
Okay. So you have a motion, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any questions on that motion?
So this, after the twelve months, we'll reassess the agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless the AIPP comes through before.
Yes.
Yep. All right, no more questions, we'll call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Any other aspects of this agreement that wish to be discussed?
You need to pass the main motion now, as amended.
Okay. We'll now call the roll for the original motion.
Yes, sir, Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right. Moving on.
Mayor, can I?
Please.
Add something? I'm sure JT wants to say thank you, but I spoke to JT earlier, he was up in DC last week, met Kevin Willis, the director up there, who's the big pusher for this. Kevin passed something on to him that I would like him to pass on to us because some of us in the city have taken a beating thinking that, you know, we've slowed this process down. JT, would you like to?
Sure, yes, and thank you, council. We did go to DC last week to work on all things AIPP and DEM, but the major headache was at local ADO office and the Secretary of Transportation, Buttigieg, and the undersecretary had to get involved multiple times, and this stems all the way back to the original council to where we were proposing a lease and the local ADO would say this was a full privatization. There's been people let go inside of the FAA because of what has transpired to date, and it's just, it's, the process itself, it's not fair to the municipality, it's not fair to the private operator, we're all trying to do good work here. So I'm supposed to meet Kevin at the district office in Atlanta next week, and we'll be rewriting the program for future transactions, whether or not it's between Avon Park and FAM or whatnot, but so, these are now a six-month process rather than a, what we've encountered to date, and that there's more stakeholder engagement, so it's not, anyways, hopefully we'll sort that out to a better process. Kevin Willis did file the federal register, so we have fifty-seven days until that public comment window is open, that'll expire eleven-twenty-one, assuming, I think they're going to, you know, reach out for a few last items, but we should, theoretically, we could close this by Christmas if everybody's on the ball, so.
Excellent. Any other questions for JT or anything?
So your original last meeting, a hundred and twenty days, is still in line?
So anxious to turn this off. Yeah, a hundred and twenty days still in line, so after November twenty-first, they'll have thirty days to statutorily respond. They could already have their response written up and submitted on eleven-twenty-two, and then that would be us up to the city to do the ordinances and our remaining deliverables, but yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, very good, anything else on the FAM issue? Seeing none. We'll move on, any staff updates? Attorney updates? City manager report? Very important business.
Just the big decision you got to make tonight, probably the biggest one, one you want to have Halloween.
Okay.
Sebring is having theirs, official one for the city, Saturday the twenty-eighth, from six to nine, I don't think Lake Placid's chosen yet, so it's all in your hands.
Okay. Any thoughts, council? Preferences? Obviously, Halloween itself is on the thirty-first, which is Tuesday. I believe we have an event going on the twenty-ninth, Shrunker Treat. I don't know if we want to do something that coincides with it, if you want to have a separate day. I'm open.
In the past, we almost always did it on Saturday, but we're getting close to the middle of the week now, so it's kind of like, I don't think we want to do it after the thirty-first, so my only suggestion is we do it on Saturday the twenty-eighth unless somebody thinks we should do it on the thirty-first.
I don't think we should do it on the thirty-first.
Yes, because then you got people in school and things, I think Saturday's always worked well for Avon Park.
Yes. I think we should keep it as it is, Saturday before.
Twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Any time criteria or? I guess it won't really matter, would it?
No, it's going to be dark early, they'll want it.
Sure. We'll just say the twenty-eighth, and they can celebrate it whenever the heck they want.